4:00 PM. I'm calling this Venus Regular City Council meeting to order. Ms. Green, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Alejandro Galvez.
Present.
Councilmember place one, Teresa Hoffman.
Present.
Councilmember place two, Mayor Protem Tony Bovinich.
Present.
Councilmember place three, Cheryl Kaiser.
Present.
Councilmember place four, Michelle Hamm.
Present.
Councilmember place five, Drew Wilson. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Green. If you would please rise for the invocation led by Mr. Hala, along with the Pledge of Allegiance and Pledge of the Texas Flag. Moving on to Section Two, Announcements for the Mayor. Cell phones will be placed and vibrate silent only. No conversation or comment from the audience is permitted unless specifically called upon by the mayor, and please remain respectfully quiet. Moving on to Section Three. Ms. Green, do you have any citizen public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. We will move on to Section Four. The Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda have been previously discussed, require little or no deliberation or routine by the council. If discussion is desired, then an item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Otherwise, approval of the Consent Agenda authorizes the city administrator to implement each item in accordance with staff's recommendation. I have two items to move to discussion and consideration. Would you like for me to go over those first, Ms. Green?
Yes, please.
Okay. 4.2, Resolution to amend the EDC bylaws. I'll move to discussion and consideration. And 4.3, Amendment of the City's Speed Limit Ordinance. I'll move to discussion and consideration. As far as the other items, 4.1, Approval of Meeting Minutes for City Council Regular Meeting on June 10th, 2024. And 4.4, Ratifying the Payment of Bills for the Month of April and May 2024. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay. Let's address item 4.2 under Discussion and Consideration, which is the Resolution to amend the EDC bylaws. I was asked to move this to this Discussion and Consideration section. Counsel, any questions, comments? Councilwoman Hoffman?
Yeah, I wanted to make some comments on this. I realize that the council can change this. They're right without any input. But I've received numerous calls over it, and I would personally like to see... The foreb... board hasn't had a meeting over it. They've had no say-so in it. And it's my opinion I would like for them to have some say-so in this.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Councilwoman Bovinich?
So I also billed it a phone call about this. And I guess one of my concerns on it is, and I understand the reason why we're changing it, we're changing it to mirror planning and zoning. Because I believe planning and zoning is currently under this format. So if we're going to do EDC and planning and zoning, I just want to make sure that we do the same process for every board. But the problem that that may bring up is, is so last year, I made the proposal for the Parks Board that we've had parked because we didn't have funds to fund it with. And that's kind of been on a back burner for us to finish. We've had other priorities, obviously. But... and then I put that on my dream list this year for our budget is to try to get some, even if it's $1,000, just something to start off with. So then, is that going to mean that we're going to put seven people on a Parks Board as well? Because my... The discussions we've had in the past on the Parks Board were to keep it lean and mean, if you will. Three to five members. We get people who are oriented in research because if we create that Parks Board, that research is going to need to be focused on grant writing and ways to get, you know, money for park equipment and, you know, funding for that, whatever we do with that. But those are... We can't just appoint just whoever applies and put them on that board. It needs to be somebody with some experience. And I have one person in mind specifically that would be a really good fit for that board. But that was one of my concerns is if, are we going to then try to put seven people on a Parks Board? It's going to be basically a small board that's only going to meet maybe once a quarter in the beginning. And then if we don't do that, then we've... We're back to the square one where we've got two boards doing this, and then there's another board doing something else. And I would like to see it all streamlined and we do the same thing in each instance. That's my only concern. So I want to see what the other council members... And then one of the other things I guess I would like to do is maybe throw it back on the boards and let them do the work on that and say, hey, what... you boards, what do y'all think about how we fill these in the future? And are there updates that we need to do to the ordinances regarding these boards? So, I don't know. Something for us to think about and maybe discuss.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Kaiser, do you have anything?
No, I'm following them. What they have asked and what they suggested is pretty well exactly what I've got in comments from the public.
Councilwoman Hamm?
I'm good with making all the boards consistent. And if we need to, you know, take this offline and do a little more refining on it, I'm good with that. Instead of running it through and approving it today. I don't... I don't see anything wrong with putting, you know, places on the EDC. And if we see that it's appropriate for the parks and rec, then we could do that. But we haven't developed parks and rec enough yet. It can always be updated, I reckon. That's it.
Josh, do you have any comments on this?
Sure. Just keep in mind, the EDC is a little bit of apples and oranges when it comes to our other advisory boards, right? So the EDC is a component unit of the city. It has its own budget. It does its, you know, has its own basically operations. That being said, whatever the EDC or any board, you know, maybe recommends, ultimately, the council is going to be the one that has to approve it anyway. So while you may, you know, kick it back, if you will, to the board specifically, whatever they come up with is going to have to come back to the council for approval. That being said, the EDC is a little bit different, like I say, from the other boards. The other boards are advisory boards. They make recommendations, right, to the council. The EDC actually passes a budget, which you guys obviously approve. But once that's approved, they kind of do their own thing throughout the year. That doesn't necessarily come back to the council every single time. So there's a little bit more autonomy when it comes to EDC. But I would suggest and recommend, considering what the mayor said, if you guys want to have places, I think it makes a lot of sense to have that. So you have, you know, your mayor place on each one of these boards. My experience is that it helps share the burden amongst council people to find their own appointees rather than just, as you've... As we've already discussed, just kind of taking all comers, right? And then each individual, just like any other political appointee, each individual councilperson can go find somebody that kind of meets their, you know, kind of general sense of where the EDC wants to go or the Parks Board once we get one up and going, or the P&amp;Z for that matter. So just keep in mind that whatever you guys decide this evening, if it's to table it, whatever goes back to the EDC or any other of the boards will always come back here for final approval.
Counsel, do you have any more questions or comments? This often? No? Mayor Protem? Councilwoman Kaiser? Councilwoman Hamm? Okay. Yeah, my goal here was to make everything uniform across the board. Instead of basically being, you know, who gets the... Make a motion to get recognized first and then nominate someone. Every council member be responsible for their place on those corresponding boards. Also, it makes it where... How do I word this? It also makes it where politics does not get involved. If some people don't like other people, but yet those people are still wanting to serve, to me, it takes that out of it. Because someone's appoint... appointment is not subject to challenge by another council member, and yet the council as a whole still decides on place seven at that point. They can still vote on that. So the goal was to streamline the process for all these boards. And as far as the Parks Board, I could easily see that being just five members and just five council appointees, make it a smaller board. But as long as they're appointed by the council members, that's how I look at it. So my goal was to streamline it, take the politics out of it, make council more responsible for their positions, to learn about these people, get to know them, you know, and see if they're a right fit for those boards. And then if so, then you can make your appointment, and it wouldn't be such a challenge. So that's basically what I was looking at here. Those are my thoughts on it. So if there's any no more discussion, I will place on the floor for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution to amend the EDC bylaws as you stated them.
Okay. Councilwoman Hammond's made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? That's my goal. I do want to make it clear though, if we... I'm sorry to interrupt. If we do appoint somebody and majority of council can still have the option to take them out. I'm sorry, not take them out, but vote them out. No, not take them out, but if there's issues, the council can still... The council as a whole could still... Yeah, don't put that in the minutes, Callie. I could deliberate and still remove them if I'm correct, right? That power is not taken away. It's just as far as appointments, is that correct? Okay. Mr. Hala, is that correct?
I'm concerned about the P&amp;Z. Keeping the P&amp;Z are not...
I think if you're... Tony, if you're concerned about not P&amp;Z, but the parks, if you're concerned about keeping that small, I think that's appropriate at this time. I mean, we're not... It's just started out. I think the EDC, we're trying to grow it and trying to grow the city in the right way. And I think if we, as a collective, make a good decision in appointing people in there, I think that that will grow. The EDC will grow, but also the city will benefit from that.
And somebody would so... If it's my place that's open on the Planning and Zoning Commission, for instance, just to use that as an example. So my place is empty. And so I propose to put John Doe on that seat. It still has to be seconded by somebody on the council, and then the council has to vote on it, which theoretically it could be not approved. So there's still some leeway there, I guess. If I... if you had a... Let's look five years into the future. We've got some people, and we've got a divided council, and nobody's working together. And you've got one that's way out there that's doing something that nobody likes. But then they want to put somebody that's even more radical than them in a board seat. So there's still some veto powers, is what I see. But if we're doing seven for EDC, we're doing seven for planning and zoning, and then the only other board, I guess, that we would create would be the Parks Board, are we going to leave anybody out? And are anybody going to have their feelings hurt when they don't... We don't have an at-large? And then the... Is that going to be done by place? I guess we can hash that out later on when we get to that point. Hopefully, we're going to do that in the next couple of months, maybe, depending on the budget. But consistency is good.
Yeah, I think we're growing. And I think we all see that the city is growing, and we're probably going to have more than one opportunity to update this... These ordinances and resolutions. So I think this is a good step in the right direction. I don't think it's unfair to anybody. I think... I think the whole council will have a say in who may come... You know, it's just... It just gives one person, just say for myself, it gives me the opportunity to say, okay, I have place four that I need to fill. Let me look for a candidate. It's taken the burden off of everybody else trying to find a candidate for one place. So it just kind of helps relieve some of that burden. But it puts the onus back on you as council to say yes or no. Is that a good candidate or not?
Any other questions, comments? Hey, there's still a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Hamm. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Bovinich. Do... all in favor? All opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries 3-0 with one abstention. Okay, moving on to... Let's see. Item 4.3, the Amendment of the Speed Limit Ordinance. Chief Groom, I think we're pretty much aware of what we need to do, but I want to make sure the public knows this is not, hey, I want the speed limit to be 30 miles an hour. It's I need my officers to have the tools they need to enforce the law properly. But if you want to speak on it briefly, let them know. Yes, my chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so this has been something that's at least been mentioned a couple of times in past administrations, and, you know, never got any traction to get it done. It is obviously not politically popular. And basically, it comes down to state law versus city law. So the city ordinance says that all residential streets is 20 miles an hour. And the state law says that cities cannot set a speed limit less than 25 miles an hour. And I'm looking at Mr. Hala to make sure he doesn't say I'm wrong. So... and also, state law goes on to say that the prima facie speed limit, which is basically, it's fancy Latin for this is a fact unless it's disproved. So it's, you know, that's basically what they're saying. The prima facie speed limit is 30 miles per hour for residential areas, urban areas that are not like state highways. So the state's basically saying you can do 25 if you want to, but they're generally considered 30 miles an hour, the streets that we're talking about. And then the law goes on to say that if you do 25 miles an hour, there are certain hurdles that you have to jump through, namely, two things, if I remember correctly. One is an engineering study to determine that the roadway needs to be 25 miles an hour. And I don't know what they did in the past. I don't believe any of the streets since I've been here have been built with an engineering study, you know, talking about the speed limit that it needs to be or doesn't need to be. And then the other thing you have to do is yearly reporting on all the streets that are 25 miles an hour. And you have to keep track of, you know, how many stops you made there and all these kind of things. So those are the two hurdles that you'd have to jump through to go down to 25 miles an hour. And like I said, 20 miles an hour is not permissible. Anything under 25 is not permissible by state law. And of course, as council and the mayor knows, anytime there's a conflict between state law and an ordinance, the state law controls. So we've... I've been here coming up on nine years, and we've kind of had this problem of our ordinance says 20 miles an hour, signs say 20 miles an hour, but the state says they're 30 mile an hour. It's very confusing for the police. It's confusing for any of the public that know what those are. It's potentially, you know, not a fair deal if you don't see the speed limit sign and you know that you can't be held to a standard under 25 miles an hour, and you get stopped for 25 miles an hour in a residential zone that you're not familiar with the speed limit. So there's a lot of things to go into it. But at the end of the day, like, it just comes down to what the state law says, and that says 30 miles an hour, or jump through all these hoops and do 25 miles an hour. So that's why we're here. Somebody asked me if this is what I wanted, like, as far as, like, do I want the speed limits to go up 10 miles an hour? It's not necessarily that I want them to. It's just, again, it's state law. It's very clear. We've kind of hashed this out, I think, back and forth legally, and there's... there is no answer to go to 20 miles an hour. I will say, and I think I mentioned this to you, the state did have legislation this past legislative session that would have allowed cities, without jumping through any hoops, to move it down. And I think that was at 25 miles an hour. That actually died in committee in the Senate and the House, I believe. So if this is, you know, changed tonight, I would, you know, urge anybody who does not like this change to contact their state representatives and their state senators because that's where the law is actually set in this case. We can only, you know, as a general law city, we can only do what we're permitted to do by the state, and that would be the public's place to address these concerns that they have. And, you know, I believe, you know, that they are valid concerns, you know, but it's the state that has this law set, and we have no ability to change it unless our representatives change it at the state level. So... And if anybody has any questions?
Just to clarify too, chief, you were right. There's... there was a Senate bill and a House bill. There was two separate bills. One was for 25, one was for 20, to allow us to work without having to pay for engineering studies and everything like that. But none of them even made it to the governor's desk. I think you're right, they both died in committee, so nothing has changed. And just a little tidbit, thanks to Ms. Green, because I think we thought this was passed in, like, 2017. It actually was passed in 1991 when this ordinance was signed. I don't know if it was even legal back then or not. I don't know. But a great city attorney once told me that councils can pass whatever ordinances they want, just doesn't mean they're legal.
Yeah, yeah.
But... Very wise city attorney, yes. But, you know, counsel, that's where we're at. It's not because I want the speed limit at 30. I don't. But, you know, we need to be in compliance with the law, and I want my officers to make sure that they can enforce the law properly. So it's not because I want the roads fast. It's not what it is. But we've had years to... I mean, we... It's been going on for, what? Almost 30, over 30 years? And it's just, I guess, maybe I just decided to look at it and be like, hey, I don't think we can do this. So that's where we're at. Counsel, any questions?
Just to clarify that it doesn't...
Councilwoman Hamm?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It doesn't increase, like, through the speed, the school zones and stuff like that.
So I think the only change made on... for this ordinance was just the 20s to the state required 30.
Mayor Protem?
So I just wanted to point out that we passed this ordinance in 1991, and then the state, on September 1st of 1995, passed this law that says we can't have a speed limit less than 30 miles an hour. And then if you want it 25 miles an hour, which is the lowest that you can possibly make it, you have to jump through the hoops, as Chief Groom pointed out. I also had a quick question for Chief Groom. In December of 20... In December of 2023, did this council direct you to... Will you turn your mic off? Did this council direct you to clean up some ordinances that we had?
Yes, sir.
Why did we do that?
There were several things that were unclear at best and just had not been looked at in a long time. You know, like the peddler's permits back in front of you or in front of you guys tonight, and that's a clear example. Like, it required Callie to do a whole lot of things from the city secretary office. And, you know, they were written in a different time when we didn't have a permitting department, and the city secretary did everything. So if you look through the ordinances right now, you'll find things that Callie's supposed to be doing that we've now hired staff that, you know, would normally be doing those day to day. So there's a lot of those kind of things.
I got some phone calls, you know, when the agenda was posted, and then I talked to a couple of neighbors over the weekend, and they expressed their concerns to me. And when I explained to them that the law wasn't consistent with state law, I mean, if it were up to me, we would set residential areas at 15 miles an hour. And then Michelle may have want to set it at 22 miles an hour. A speed limit... We could set a speed limit at 27 miles an hour if we wanted to, if we were going to try to comply with the under 30 part of that law, right? We... everybody tends to make them in five mile an hour increments. But, you know, I would like to see the speed limit lower. But so what am I going to do about this? Well, we can't make it and keep it 20, so I'm going to write a letter to our state representative and our state senator and tell them that we recently had this come up in our council, and we had to fix this ordinance and that, you know... See if I can get an explanation of why the bill died in the committee and what were the major issues with that. Maybe... If we get the law changed, then we can do it. But I just wanted to make it clear to the people out here that are watching or are going to watch this later on that, you know, this wasn't something that we just... We just decided one day, well, let's let everybody drive 30 miles an hour. It's because what we had in place wasn't legal, and it hasn't been legal since September of 1995, which is 29 years. So we directed the chief of police to find ordinances that needed to be updated and fixed, and that's what he did. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, chief. With that, I will open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve...
Is it 4... 4.3?
A second.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Okay. Moving on to 5.1, Discuss and Consider Resolution Amending the Authorized Signatories to Execute Checks Currently Unfiled at Pinnacle Bank. I don't know whose item this is. Oh, Ms. Green.
Mayor, Council. I went on vacation last week, and so realizing that I'm a signer for checks and the mayor, and the mayor pro tem, and the city administrator. But unfortunately, those... The city administrator is Tanya Roberts, and the mayor pro tem was Drew Wilson. And so those are... Those people are no longer in those places. And so we have to update the resolution to give to the bank so we can get our signers correct. And this is what this item is. If you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving... Go ahead and open the floor for a motion, 5.1.
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 15-2024-07.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Motion. Motion carries 4-0. And here's the big one. Moving on to 5.2, Discuss and Consider Action to Approve a Resolution to Accept the Annual Audit for the Period of October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Travis Rogers with Patio Brown and Hill as City Auditors. He'll be presenting the audit this evening.
Thank you all for having me this evening. As Josh said, my name's Travis Rogers. I am a CPA with Patella Brown and Hill, based out of Waco. Just here with you guys this evening to brief with, briefly share with you the results of the fiscal year 2022 audit. And what I just passed out here a moment ago, should each have in front of you a copy of the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2022, also a copy of our required communication with governance letter. So what I was going to do here is take just a couple of minutes, flip through the report, touch a couple of high points, highlight the results of the audit, a couple of highlights in the report. I'll mention the page numbers in the report if anyone cares to follow along, if anyone has any questions, comments, et cetera, as I'm going, be sure to let me know. Just going to start real quick on page one, so the very beginning, the page with the header Independent Auditors Report. So essentially this report here, it's a lot of standard language that breaks down our responsibility as the city's outside auditors for rendering an opinion on the city's financial statements, also on the responsibility of the city's management for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with US GAAP. Like I said, lots of standard language. The exciting part is the very first section towards the top of page one where it says report on the audit of the financial statements. Very first subheader beneath that labeled opinions. If we go down to that second paragraph that begins with, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2022. So this is what we refer to in accounting parlance as an unmodified or a clean opinion, meaning that as a result of our audit, based on all of our procedures, our risk assessments, there were no material departures from US GAAP that would require a modification to the audit opinion, which we would mention and disclose here in this letter. But again, unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we're able to provide as the city's outside auditors. So for that fiscal year ended September 30th, 2022, no material departures from GAAP were Flipping a couple of pages back to page 13, our lucky number, the governmental fund balance sheet, just wanted to very quickly point out the fund balance of the general fund. General fund is the very first column on the left on page 13. Down towards the bottom where we get to fund balances, you'll see a total of unassigned fund balance of about 2.2 million as of September 30th, 2022. So essentially unassigned, meaning that there are no internal or external restrictions placed on its use. This is the residual balance of the fund the city can use to fund its operations at its own discretion as it sees fit. So comparing that number, a couple of pages over on page 15, the income statement or the operation statement for the year ended September 30th, 2022, lines out the different revenues and expenditures of the major governmental funds for the fiscal year. Just wanted to point out the general fund, revenues of just under 4.3 million, expenditures of right at 4.3 million, got us down to the ending fund balance of about 2.2 million. That 4.3 million of expenditures, if I double checked on the calculator on my phone in the parking lot, just to make sure, that is that 2.2 million unassigned fund balance. If we divide that by the 4.3 million of expenditures in the general fund for 2022, that's a little over six months worth of expenditures in the general fund and unassigned fund balance. It varies by the size and type of entity, but the classic rule of thumb for local governments is aim for three to six months minimum. So if you have six to seven months along in there, you have what we would call a healthy fund balance, not one that's excessive or concerning in any way, but one that indicates the city is very solvent and has resources on hand to meet its obligations, both known and less known as they arise. Doing just a little bit of page flipping, was going to point out on page 50, uh, page 50, yes, sir. It's going to be another independent auditor's report. We have, this one is required for audits conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. Essentially, if you've heard of government auditing standards, or as we call Yellow Book colloquially, essentially those auditing standards have additional requirements of us as your outside auditor, we are required to consider things like laws, contracts, grant agreements, regulations, things of that nature, that noncompliance with which could have a material impact on the financial statements. If there were any exceptions or any findings as a result of that consideration, we would note and disclose them as a part of this letter. Happy to report there were no findings or other issues disclosed or discovered as a part of our audit were required to report in accordance with government auditing standards. So this letter simply lays out the requirements of us, the auditor, in accordance with those standards and just not disclose any matters, findings or issues. So, so just to briefly summarize, unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements for FY '22, no findings or other issues required to be reported in accordance with government auditing standards, also little over six months of unassigned fund balance in the general fund as of the end of the fiscal year. So that is kind of the Reader's Digest version, but yeah, just wanted to share that with you guys. If you have any questions or comments?
Council, any questions?
Anything else?
I'm sorry, sir.
While you're here.
My apologies.
No, you're good.
Council, any questions or comments? Councilwoman Hoffman? Mayor Protem?
Just a quick question for Josh. Are, are they doing the 2022, 2023 audit?
Okay. Councilwoman Kaiser? Councilwoman Ham? Okay, all right. With no other questions, I'd like to open the floor for a motion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve, or I make a motion to approve a resolution to accept the annual audit for the period October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022.
Do I, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Moving on to 5.3, discuss, consider a change in the City of Venus Code of Ordinance, Chapter 10, Article 2, Chief?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So one of the ordinances that we were asked to take a look at was the peddler's ordinance. I saw a little bit of comment on this online and I would like to address one of those points, as somebody said, and this is probably very indicative of a lot of people's opinion that they'd like to outlaw door-to-door soliciting as a whole in the City of Venus. And I'm not going to say I agree or disagree with that, but on the state law or court decisions, I think would say that we can't do that. So legally, we have to, we're allowed to regulate it and we have to provide a commonsensical, good, good policy, good ordinance for these guys to follow as they're doing it to protect the safety of citizens. So I've borrowed from several different ordinances from some cities around here to kind of regulate that and just kind of the Reader's Digest version. We upped the fee for the permit, the last time we went over the master fee schedule, which was a couple of months ago in preparation of this change. So the fee is now, it went from, I think, $25, it is now $200 and that's to incorporate better background checks. We were basically detailing the police department to just do a background check, which you'd think would be good, and we can do some really good background checks, but we can't use our information in some regards for something like this. So we were limited in what resources we could use. So now we have a, an outside company that can do the criminal background checks that, that the police department certainly can do, but we can't use our system to do it. So, so we'll get the same information, but it does cost money and that's why the fee went up. So between that, we're also going to require high visibility vests that have Venus Solicitor printed on them on front and back, along with a city ID card that's going to go in a little pouch on the vest. That should better identify permit holders to the public so they know that at least they've hopefully been vetted by the police department and the city in general. And, and also make it easier for the officers to know if they're getting solicitor reports and they're not wearing our vest, then probably don't have a permit. And even if they do have a permit and they don't have the vest on, it's also a violation of law. So, so we're making them more visible, A, for traffic and B, for the community to better identify them. We kept in exemptions for the fee for nonprofit organizations and kind of changed the application process for them. And there's a complete exemption from the law for political speech activities and religious speech activities. If you're, if you're a church and you're trying to get donations, you have to go through the nonprofit side. If you're a church and you just want to spread the message, then you're exempt from the law. Same thing with political groups, if somebody's campaigning for a candidate, they don't have to come through the city and do all that and that's a First Amendment problem if we were to restrict that very much. We've also controlled panhandlers, so there's been some cities where panhandlers on the side of the road getting donations for things have been hit and of course, they're not very popular with people either, so we regulated that. There's no hand-to-hand transactions basically in the traffic due to the danger there. And one of the things that, not, not only are we changing the background process, but the, the old ordinance only allowed us to disqualify somebody if they had warrants for their arrest or they didn't fill their application out properly. And warrants for their arrests could have meant a traffic ticket, but if they were a sex offender that didn't have a warrant for their arrest, technically by the old ordinance, we'd have to let them go in. So we've never approved one of those, never had anybody approach us, but we have fixed all that, so, you know, sex offenders aren't, aren't allowed and, and then like, I'm less concerned about somebody might have a traffic ticket in Plano than I am somebody who's got like a burglary conviction on their record or, you know, things like that. So there's certain offenses that relate to violence and property crimes that, you know, if you're a homeowner, you definitely don't want those people like knocking on your door that we can disqualify somebody for. So I think we've, we've made this process a little bit easier on staff as well and that's an internal process, so we can change it if we find problems and we don't have to come back to council. So I think we've got a good process set up between permits and the police department to make sure these things get taken care of quickly and like they should be. And if there's any issues in the process, we can always just change it internally and review our processes on that. So that's really all I have unless somebody has any questions. Time limit's changed and then the old ordinance didn't have any prohibitions on holidays, so we put prohibitions on holidays, we put prohibitions on Sundays, so you can't solicit on Sundays. And the other prohibition that we put in there was a, so we shortened the time, so I think it's nine to seven if I'm not mistaken, but it also goes by a daylight thing, so in the wintertime, as the days get shorter, they only have, I think it's 30 minutes after sunset to be out, so they can't be knocking on your door at 7 o'clock at night in the dead of winter when it's totally dark outside. So, and that's, you know, for safety for them because there's lots of cars and of course, people don't like their, they don't like their door being knocked on in the day, but they sure don't want it being knocked on in the middle of the night, so. So that's all I got unless somebody's got questions.
Council, any questions, comments? Councilwoman Ham?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Kaiser?
No.
Mayor Protem? Councilwoman Hoffman?
All right, just real quick, I just, this is one of the things I want to propose to council on here. I honestly, like I've said before, nobody likes getting bothered at home. That's, you know, that's where we're supposed to have our, oh, God, this fire department. That's where we're supposed to have our space, our privacy. So the last thing I need is, anyone needs is someone knocking on their door trying to sell something, so this is just kind of to update some things on it. I'd like to direct staff, Josh, and like to direct staff to make sure we, and Chief, include a photo of the vests and the permits that they're supposed to be carrying in the next newsletter that we put out and the water bill, put it on our social media, please, to make sure the public is aware of what to look for, because if they're not wearing the vest and they're not having the permit, they need to call the sheriff's office and then have you all go out there and check.
Yeah.
Police, sorry, contact dispatch, yes, non-emergency, of course, yes, non-emergency. Just so you know, as someone who's been dispatch for almost 20 years, someone soliciting without a permit is not a 911 emergency. Call the non-emergency number for dispatch and have Venus P. go and check it out. And thank you, Mayor Protem, yes, contact the dispatch for the, and then have them send you all out and, because that's, it's, it's annoying, is what it is, and so.
Mayor, I just want to stress too, I think the vests are a good idea to keep, just so you know, I know you're concerned, it's not so there, we identify people to take them out or anything like that, just so we know who's in compliance with the ordinance.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't have the vest in yet, but as soon as we get them in, we'll get those picture taken and in the newsletter. So we're still working through with a vendor on it, I think we've got them identified, we're just trying to get the right model of vest.
Yes, and I will not, I will not take credit for that. That was a, an idea given to me by Jessica Kirkendall about making sure we put it in the newsletter and everything too, and I think that's fantastic because the public, we get, we get that information out there to them as far as, and they know what to look for. And also, Mr. Ray Jackman notified me of a small wording issue in there, is that something we can correct? Okay. Clerical? Okay. Perfect. Okay, I have no other further questions, comments. Thank you, Chief. I'd like to open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve change to City of Venus Code of Ordinance, Chapter 10, Article 2 pertaining to vendors and solicitors.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries 4-0. And moving on to item six, or pardon me, Section 6, Executive Session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 5D1.001, the city council recessed to executive session closed meeting to discuss the following. Section 5D1.071, consultation with the attorney, discussion with the city attorney to receive legal advice regarding stallion ranch pre-annexation agreement dated October 1st, 2021 between the City of Venus and LGI Homes. Will recess to executive session at 7:22 PM. PM.[496.59]
Okay, I'd like to reconvene us in the open session at 8:16 PM. And is there any action to be taken in result of executive session?